Six fifty-eight, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting of the Board of Aldermen for a regular meeting in session. I'd like to welcome everybody, thanks for being here, okay? And if I could, give a roll call here.
Landon Nagley.
Yeah.
Don Rogers.
Yeah.
David Wilkins.
Present.
Terry Mottley. Robert Quentin.
Here.
Don Foreman.
There you go.
All right, with that, if everybody can join me and pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're at this time, I realize there's a lot of people here tonight, okay? But I'm gonna ask everybody when I come back, we're gonna go into closed session. Closed session's not gonna be, and with you folks sitting here, with respect to your time, I won't leave y'all sitting here a long time. I have some people here for part of the closed session, and so I'd like to work through that very quickly, just so you know. It's not to put you folks on ice or to be disrespectful in any way. We, our, our, our legal team is available now for the call, and it's basically, I don't think it'll be anything but informative at this point, what we're looking into and talking about today, okay? So we're gonna adjourn to closed session, and we'll be right back as soon as that session's over to hear comments from all of you folks. When I come back, I would ask, I think we got, we know what a lot of the feelings are. We've got a lot of letters and things with the zoning, with the chickens. We've had some stuff on that as well, the fowl, that kind of thing. So if you guys could limit yourselves to a couple of minutes, in respect for how many people we may potentially gonna be addressing the aldermen and the board tonight, I would appreciate that, that'd be okay. And so at this time, we're gonna go into... You want to read some closed session?
Oh, sure. In the commotion to go into closed session, and during the meeting of the Board of Aldermen, they elected to go into closed session and hold a closed vote. And the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, as provided for under section six one zero dot zero two one, of the revised statutes for legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys; two, as provided for under section six one zero dot zero two one two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal considerations thereof; and, as provided for under section six one zero dot zero two one three, of the revised statutes of Missouri for hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of a particular employee by a public governmental body.
Thank you. First, second, all in favor of going to closed session? A roll call.
Don Foreman.
No, I think we should be last.
Hudson.
Yes.
Mottley.
Yes.
Nagley.
Yeah.
Wilkins.
Four.
Don Rogers.
All right, passes, five more, we'll move to closed session, we'll be right back. We'll be counting to your time, okay? I promise you.
Are we allowed to run these?
I think so. You're okay.
Next, everybody might want to... Okay.
How does he make it up? He's cold, but she don't lie.
That's terrible.
I took her out there, forty minutes after I got off, they called me up. Stayed here.
And she's crying.
Actually, I got her in bed, in bed, and then they saved her. They said, you know, that was really, it's probably a bull. I took her out there and they went...
She was horrible.
Yeah.
And then, then, he left the trash bag with the liver.
I had, had sitting on chair, I was standing there now, you had...
It was in the chair.
Yeah.
And it had chili in it.
Yeah, so she got rid.
No, she hadn't, she got it too. And she, then she went and lived in the suburbs.
Oh, yeah, there was chili on top of...
She probably did that because she got her shit. Here was she there, dog, dog. She shaved them.
That girl helped, but it had time to get fully cold.
No, but in accident, they did, because Stephen passed her sister. And he always goes, and they told him, but she wasn't not busy. And they, and then they called him and said...
No.
And then she comes, she comes to my house and I go... Yes, he was... She looks so... Of course, her hair's so shamed. And then holds the top of her hair, it's all red, something chili.
How long has Cory been mowing your yard?
Um, probably a year and a half.
Oh, is that all?
Two years.
Oh, then that was my luck.
Now, did you hire Cory or did you hire D and D?
Cory. Actually, I talked to Cory as I can mow the yard, and he said yes. And so, in fact, there's a couple of checks that, he said his bank wasn't, wouldn't cash for it because, well, see, he had the business, and that's, that's who I sent the checks to, 'cause I just set it up through auto, auto bill pay, uh, through the bank. So, you know, or not auto, but, you know, bill pay through the bank, and so that's why I had them listed. Well, after a few times, he was like, you don't have, you don't have Landers lawn service anymore, so we're not gonna cash your checks. So anyway, he's gotta give them back to me so I can, you know, make good on...
Yeah, he, he's been working for D and D.
Right.
And she, she's a different character. She's, she's a lady, I like her.
Well, they, I talked to him about leaves, and it's just too expensive for me to use them, because he has to use her equipment.
Right, right. What are they charging you, guys?
Uh, to do the yard, thirty-five.
That's what they're charging you.
And, uh, the stars...
For both back and front?
Yeah, yeah, everything, everything. And, um, but on the leaves, it's gonna be at least a hundred bucks each time they do it, approximately.
Right, yeah, I understand. I'm squeezing the thirty-five dollars out of every two weeks, so I understand.
But you've got a lot of leaves, why don't you handle yours?
I'm sorry?
How you handle the leaves in your yard?
I rake them up into the driveway and leave them.
They just move away? Over my yard, now I'm going to...
Actually, usually not. If anything, they go across the street.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm the one that, when I know it's gonna be a nice windy day, I go out there and I heave the leaves, just to get them away from the house.
Was that your dad that used to sit out there with the blower and the pile of leaves that were burning?
Oh, yeah, I did, I did that.
But he used to crack us up?
Uh-huh.
'Cause he, even on a windy day, he'd be out there.
I don't know about that. But no, that's, you get a little pile, a little burn pile.
Yeah, it wasn't very good.
And then you start training the leaves that way.
Sure.
I burnt the fence down one time doing that.
Oh, yeah. Well, is it...
I mean, like, serious stuff.
As a kid...
Telephone pole, and then you still charge. But I had the foresight to take the hose out there with it.
There you go, there you go. At least you take it. When I was a kid, I came from a family of six kids, and two boys and four girls, and we've been, the ones in the middle. And between my brother and I, we almost kept the house on fire five times.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, one time, I was about six. We used to have a floor heater, I don't know if you're familiar with those, but it's a central furnace in the floor.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh...
Yeah, about Martin, it don't make a sound. Because I was babysitting, and I was laying on top of it with, not on top of it, you know, but I was laying such that my feet were over the vent, and I had a blanket over me, and it got so hot that the blanket started smoking.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I drug a braided rug on the top so I could stand on it.
Oh, yeah, same thing.
It did catch on fire.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we had some adventures. So is Cory doing a pretty good job with your yard? 'Cause you guys are meticulous, your yards always beautiful.
I do it.
Huh?
Thank you. I mean, I do a better job, but, yeah, he doesn't...
Well, you know, your heart's in it.
Yeah. And actually, it's, I'd like to have it a little bit shorter, however.
Me too.
Our yard is so uneven, that he did do it one notch lower, and it was so uneven that it's scalped in certain areas. So with that, we had to leave it high.
Yeah, yeah, be careful with that. Yeah, I, I've never been big on yard work. My...
I mean, I, I enjoy it, it's just that I've got so many other things that need to be done, and I'd like to do, and, you know, work is work and whatever.
Are you still working there? I just stopped working.
Doug, I'm like looking at the clock, I gotta go to bed before you guys...
I can relate. What time do you get up?
Two.
Two. I used to get up at four at night. Two. Where do you work?
At the airport in Florida.
Oh, okay.
Get up at two, leave at three, work at three-thirty.
What do you do?
TSA.
Okay. How long you been doing that?
Ten years.
Ten years? You like it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
It is like every other job, in that there's things that you really like and things that change you without.
Sure, you're dealing with people, it's kinda... Both, both the workforce and the public, so I understand. Well, I had the, I probably had the June job for the last fourteen years.
Which was?
Uh, I worked for the, I'm a surplus owner in town, and I ran his off-site warehouse.
Oh, okay.
I did that for eleven years. So...
Where was it?
The off-site warehouse would rent different spaces from different companies. The last one was, you know where EDI is? In Columbia? You know where three M is? Right across the street? The water place, the water treatment?
Oh, yes, 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 I know.
Okay, I rented the, well, we rented the southeast corner of, of the ware, of their manufacturing. It was fifteen thousand square feet. And we, at one point, we took up the Henry Last. Yeah, he was pretty, he had a pretty lucrative business for a long time, he just... His business sense wasn't to where it should've been, unfortunately.
Why this closed-door set can't happen that early, kinda chapped my eyes?
Well, it's kinda, I've lived in a lot of smaller communities, not a lot, I live in a little bit of...
I mean, but to have it first, I mean, everybody...
Usually not, usually actually...
Everybody hunkers gates, comes, makes a special point to be here, and then they do this to us.
Is that the, is that the gentleman tonight?
Yeah, yes, I mean, there are more of them.
I, I didn't look. What's the list of that one, John?
But it had an answer, so...
You know, whether or not they voted for or against doing it first.
So how long before you can retire?
Oh, sixty-five, you're in half.
Well, can you retire at sixty-five? 'Cause usually, well, they moved it up to sixty-six.
Right.
I turned...
I've got my, I've got ten years in, and I just...
At the airport?
It's a federal job, which helps.
Yeah, yeah, that helps a lot. Do you pay into a federal pension? Yeah, that helps a lot. Well...
It seems like that, you know, by looking at the way things are going, nothing's gonna be enough.
I'm living strictly on substitute, I understand. Yeah, unfortunately, he didn't have any kind of title, so... And I worked for, before that, I worked for General Record.
Oh, okay.
But I ended up getting all my pension early, so...
That's good. A lot of companies don't have pensions.
Yeah, that's very true. Bigger companies still have some kind of pension, but... Well, we were, we were acquired, so when they came in and took us over, because we were the, the company I worked for that was before D and D, they were a mark of excellence as far as the industry was. So when they took us over, they didn't want anything to change. So they came in, gave us all the perks they could have. It was, it was actually, it was very nice for us. And I worked for them for eleven years. Oh, good, so... I say lock the door, in which case, well...
That's like, I don't wanna be rude about it, but I wanna make sure that...
Oh, I understand. I wake up at three-thirty, four o'clock in the morning anyway, so I understand. That's a mom, you. Good. Boy, I tell you, she's, she's a neat lady.
Yeah. And she's slow now, but she, little things like, she doesn't go out and get the mail.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
She doesn't, uh, and I don't push her. We're like, today, we're at the bank, and I had to take my hand to walk to the car.
Yeah, yeah, that's... Do you have a, a lot of siblings?
Yes, I've got four.
Four?
So I have an older brother and sister, and two other brothers.
Okay.
And, uh...
Are you the only one that lives there?
Yeah. Yeah, I just happened to lose several jobs in a row, to be the truth, 'cause of the economy and I... And then, so I ended up moving home, and Dad had just passed in December, I moved home in May.
Okay.
And then, being unemployed for the time that it took to, about a year, to get a job, and then you're just, I just ended up staying. And then the more longer I stayed, the more mom needed me to stay.
Sure, sure. That's progressive, but it has to be, you know? And both my parents have passed, so...
They live here?
My mother lived here, uh, she lived, we moved all over the place, but she, um, was raised in Tennessee, and my dad was raised in Nebraska.
Oh, wow.
So they met World War Two, and then, um, my dad was in the pharmacology, so he became a pharmaceutical salesman, and we moved from...
Hillary, yeah.
Yeah, we, we moved quite a bit, and then he got a job with the VA, so... I didn't even say hi to you, Carl.
That's okay.
He's just way bigger than I remember. Yeah, I remember when he was running around, but...
Yeah, me too. I wish he'd dress up. Wish we had those days.
It's progressive.
Longer.
Yeah. Well, you never know what you got till it's gone.
I really, yes, no, I, I don't wish, I don't, they're back.
The days may be long, the years are short.
That's how it works. That's how it works. Well, that's why you enjoy every, every bit of time you possibly can. I wonder if they're helping all get up and move. So do you have to work the weekends or so?
Pardon me, yes, I work, my weekend is Thursday, Friday off.
Okay.
Yeah, we're so short still.
Yeah, I've heard that. I saw an ad, actually, for TSA agents that...
Well, it's funny, it says that it's a, starts out as a part-time job, but you have full-time, first of all, you have full-time benefits, which is the way people get in.
The full-time benefits? Okay.
And, uh...
But the pay's not a lot, too.
Uh, because when you start out, I mean, you pay for hours, it's just that, you know, you're only hooked for twenty-five hours of pay, and it's, yes, you probably will be able to work long, but they're only gonna guarantee twenty-five hours of pay. And people can't live on that, particularly if it's a, if this is your primary job, and if you need, because of flight delay or whatever, you need to stay longer. Sorry, you gotta stay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just happen to be there long enough, and then things progress fast enough. Right now, I'm, I work thirty-two hours a week, and when I first got on as, as the... It was four days on, three days off.
Okay.
Well, then we started getting more staff, and then they spread my thirty-two hours out over five days. Well, I don't know, but... But I suffer from that to working full-time.
Well, I, at this point, I can't work long, I'm only working fourteen, so...
Yeah, and then the interview process plus the training process, so... I mean, you could, once you get hired, it's at least three weeks of, um... Of, yeah, three weeks of training, and then you have your OJT.
Do you have to go through some kind of academy?
Yeah, we use Flexi, uh, some, F Flexi, which is a federal law enforcement academy down in, well, several different places, but the new hires go to, uh...
My ex-wife was with DPS Nevada, and she was the one that would go around, check all law enforcement's computers to make sure they weren't missing information. So she had to go through it.
Personnel issues were discussed, legal matters discussed, and real estate, the real estate was discussed. Only one vote was taken, that vote was to return to general session, out of closed session. So that's what we done. So now we'll move right into public hearing for a amending zoning chapter, city code to allow zero lot lines and planned development. So, now we'll move right into, uh, public hearing for, A, amending zoning chapter, city code to allow zero lot lines in planned development districts. What are we doing, one time? Okay, so that's, first one we're gonna do is amending zoning chapter, the city code allows zero lot lines in planned development districts. So, any comments?
I have one. Oh, why in the, in the zero lot line, it says that the city needs to see a copy of covenants and restrictions, whenever the covenants and restrictions are a civil issue, and the city has no bearing responsibility on said covenants and restrictions.
I've wondered that for years.
That was at the advice of our legal counsel?
But if you're gonna have it in the code, I would, I would think the interpretation would be that you all are gonna start enforcing covenants and restrictions. Is that the intent of it?
No.
Okay.
The prime number from what I read, I'm far from an expert, I say that. Isn't it already listed somewhere else, and those are supposed to be required anyway, so-
So, this just means, well, it's already there.
Yeah, them being required, isn't, uh, trying to extend the rights, it's just solidifying them, 'cause it's already called downhill style.
Sure, but just 'cause we done something the same way for thirty years, doesn't mean that it's correct either.
We was gonna argue that point, but why change it unless we have a solid reason too? At this point in time, the advice of the legal counsel, as Bill said, and the amending zoning committee was agreeing with allowing it.
I, I mean, the way I understand this, the only purpose of doing this is to make sure that there is a maintenance agreement between the, uh, the unit. And, and that makes sense, but in general, it does not make sense.
And we did take out the architectural appearance standards, those requested.
Anything else on that topic there? B is amending zoning chapter, city of, of code to allow for short-term rentals and altering the requirements for bed and breakfast establishments. The, uh, thing on that? All right, as I said, we move to C, amending zoning chapter, city code regarding regulations for foul inside the city limits. Any questions about that? Thoughts, comments?
I gotta call it, uh-
Come up, if you could, come up to the mic, hopefully, please. Now, if you could, state your name and address for me, please.
Um, my name's Andrew Power, I live at, uh, six twenty First Street, um, just a few things. Uh, how you guys have been updated, uh, you have, um, in two different spots, uh, no such foul should be tapped within a hundred feet from the front line, or sixty feet, um, from any side of rear line. Then it is on the section one part, where it talks about, um, all livestock inside the city limits. Uh, then, in the actual chicken part, uh, uh, you guys have it down at, on the hen houses, and, uh, you have the ten feet from the rear or side property lines, and at least sixty feet from the front line. So, uh, we have two different numbers there.
It should have been changed versus section one, it should have been changed to, um, sixty feet from the front property line, ten feet from this, the rear. They was setting the plan and zoning, and that should be the case.
So, next question, real quick, um, as far as, uh, chicken tracker goes, um, a chicken tracker really isn't meant to be sat in one spot, you move it, hence a tr- chicken tracker. So, the way you guys have written it up is, you have to have the city come out, do, do a, uh, do a permit, have the city come out, make sure you're within the guidelines of ten feet, uh, from the back of your lines, uh, so that could be an issue, because a ch- chicken tracker, you actually move it, hence the tracking part. Um, other than that, um, I think that's all I, oh, one other thing, um, why are we copying word for word from a different city? Is we copying word for word from Higginsville? So, why do we do that?
A lot of times, that's how you create an ordinance, is you find another city that's already passed something similar, and you don't have to recreate.
So, use that as a fundamental draft, make changes to fit your, to alter to fit in your town, your jurisdiction, and what you've got going on in your town, and what you want for your town. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's used as a draft, it's not typically, but word for words, sometimes if that works, it's good, you know? So, that's kind of what we do. We can always debate that, that's why we have these, these here, but why would we go write up a whole new thing if somebody else has already been down this path in the road?
What they want.
Wow, and, you know, because agriculture, there's a lot of agriculture towns that changed into being more of a city-type town, right? So, we don't-
I don't, don't think Higginsville's really, I didn't really think Higginsville's too much of an ag town, being that close to, uh, to Kansas City.
They're a long way from Kansas City.
Uh, it's about fifty-four miles.
Yeah, that's a long way from Kansas City. I mean, there's as many people being shot in Columbia now as there is in Kansas City on the other basis, so, if you wanna talk about that was getting close to home, I mean, we can debate that all we can, but, uh, you know, I, I understand the point, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, that'll embarrass you, I'm just saying.
But, yeah.
We, we have to make decisions, and we're gonna base those on anywhere that somebody else has kind of got, you know, and, uh, it makes sense, Higginsville had a pretty good base, and base is bad for us.
A lot of what Higginsville had was, it was very detailed, and, um, the whole reason that we wanted to look at this is because our ordinance right now was so open to interpretation, and it didn't give any guidelines, and so, this had a lot more guidelines.
But why should we be following other people, actually leaving the path? It's that, that's what my issue is.
We're not leaving, we're not the first-
We're not actually following other people, we're taking what they have as guidance, and then we're offering to the citizens, and the citizens have an opportunity to speak and talk about what we should change, and we listen to that, we made many changes, since I've been here, we've taken a, a draft of somebody's, not just this, other thing, but, you know? So, we're very open-minded, it's a way to start, starting point that has a lot of the roadway built, and how do you make that roadway feel, fit what we want here?
Okay.
So, it's always open for discussion. We're not taking the, the easy way out, I mean, but we are trying to have an easy start to where we wanna get to, if that makes sense, right?
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All righty, is that it on foul? Good. Thank you. Rezoning request, uh, from Darren Adams, uh, from R one to R three. Comments on that? State your name and where you're at.
My name's Fred Moss, I live at two eleven West Apple Street, and I've lived at that address for thirty-three years. And I live across from Karen Park there at Alco, Allen, and Southwest Circle. I am opposed to the rezoning from the R one to the R three. For simple reasons, we've talked about, in October night meeting, we talked about the traffic flow, the parking, and the narrow streets, most sidewalks, and those are some reasons that a lot of us gave that why we're against it. I hope that someday there would be a residential, single-family dwelling home built on this land, you know, built on this property, and that would increase the value of our property. I was a little disappointed when I heard about the twenty-two units were gonna be built across the street from us. In my opinion, I'd rather see six trailers across the street from me than twenty-two units. I've given you all each a map, and I kinda wanna talk a little bit about spot zoning. As you can see in the map, I'll just show them, this is the proposed area, and he's trying to change from R one to R three. This is our area, and down here is Lakeview and Allen. Spot zoning is an application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a large area where the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's comprehensive planning and current zoning restrictions. So, here on the map, you have the R one, single-family dwelling, and all, all the yellow is the single-family dwelling, as you can see. And what Darren's trying to do is trying to get a change, just two spots to R three. And the two red squares is where the proposal for the R three zoning is. So, in, in my opinion, in the future, if R three zoning is approved in the R one district, does this mean any empty lot or a house that's being torn down, will a developer wanna build, and want to change the zoning to an R three? So, think about it. If, if a house burns down, or there's an empty lot, is this something that the city's gonna say, if the develops, if the developer gets this changed, is it gonna start wanting to put R three or R two zoning all in the R one zoning? Because it could happen, and that's not in the comprehensive plan. What I seen in the future map of the comprehensive plan was that the yellow was still the yellow. So, there's a red circle around this area, and that means that usually when there's an R one to an R three, or any type of situation, R one to an R two, there's a buffering. As you can see, there's no buffering. There's no land in between, there's no woods in between, there's, there's no buffering, and usually there is when there's different types of zones that connect to different types of zones, and... Again, I feel like that's against the comprehensive plan. I wanted to touch on Lakeview and Allen, because nobody, nobody was there from that, nobody was there on October night to represent that area. And I do see some of them, and I hope you get up this week on behalf of your area. You know, I re, I think the reason why none of us got up and spoke is because it didn't, it didn't affect us directly, because we don't live in that area, but it does. We all live in the southern part of that town. Do I go through Lakeview and Allen every day? Sure I do. You have Chance Elementary to the east, and then you have, so, you turn the intermediate school to the west, you have the bicentennial park to the west, and you have the records center to the west, and you have the high school to the south, but also, there's a lot of people that commute back and forth to work, and sometimes I'm up at five in the morning, and a lot of traffic's going out there on Lakeview, up to Highway one twenty-four, then again, coming home, commuting back from home, here or wherever, there, you know, that is a very busy intersection, and I know the planning and zoning is gonna recommend that intersection for the development of the four townhomes. That's what was to set when I, when I approved it.
They have.
But I really would hope-
Were approved, I mean, passed to us.
But I was really hoping that the city council would really look at that intersection and really take a good look at it, and, you know? As far as, uh, activity and that intersection, there is no parking on either side of Lakeview, so that means if there are any people that are visiting, those people, and those forty units are gonna have to park on that one street.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, buddy.
Good job.
Would you like to speak?
My name is Samantha Hawkins, I live at one oh eight West Lakeview, I'm just right down the front. I have a question, I do not, I would like to know what kind of housing is gonna go in that section? Is it gonna be duplexes, is it gonna be those fourplex, is it gonna be an eightplex? What's gonna go in that section of property? The property's not very big, there's no parking, um, I agree with this young lady. You can't park on Lakeview, you can't park on Allen, people are gonna have to go around it all the time. There's a lot of kids that walk up and down that street because of the schools, parents, dogs. There's just, there's just a lot of stuff there. I just, I want to know what you have planned on going there? If you can mean.
Fair enough. I think that, uh, I guess Mr. Adams is gonna respond here, probably can respond to all he's heard, at some point, probably the best way to do that, I guess. 'Cause he will, I think, answer that, and you can ask him a question, definitely, if you have any questions on that part of it.
Okay.
But feel free to-
Actually, that's, that's, I mean, that's-
Okay, that's what you want, or I think-
I just wanted some questions, do you have some questions?
If you have counterpoints or questions to that point, we'd like to have.
Okay, thank you.
Darren Adams, uh, to answer your question, the reason for the rezoning is because I wanna do a project of single-family townhomes. The city of Centaria had no ordinance or anything to allow single-family townhomes, and so, they had to create one, and in the creation of said townhome zero lot line ordinance, they determined it had to be done in R three zoning. That's the only reason that there's even a request for rezoning. Um, so what a single-family townhome is, is they are single individually addressed houses that happen to share a party wall. Uh, there's no utilities to transfer through any walls or anything, each one of them has their own electric, sewer, water, trash service, to said. Um, I can understand some of your concerns with, with the parking and things, and that's been taken into consideration. Uh, from my aspect, from the engineer that we use, uh, everything meets the Boone County standards minimum as far as parking for square footage of dwelling, number of parking spots and things. My personal thought is there's absolutely no more traffic that's gonna be created in that spot. Right now, you have four trailers that are there, the, the request is for four townhomes. Um, the, the idea of that, you know, community betterment is all in the eyes of the holder. My personal opinion is, whatever we could do to eliminate the trailers, and what it's looked like for the last ten years at least, is a betterment for our community, because I personally believe Lakeview Allen Street is kind of the gateway to our community, to our downtown area and things. And so, whenever I purchased the property, um, I did not make it a condition whatsoever of me purchasing it to get rezoning or be able to do this, because at the end of the day, I wanna do what is best for Centaria. So, with that being said, I would, I would still like to have the rezoning for Lakeview and Allen Street, but I would, Thomas Owens would like to withdraw the request for rezoning at Southwest Allen and Alco Street. And we're in negotiations with an investor right now, and it doesn't need to be rezoned to make that happen, so, uh, we're gonna withdraw our request for that. If anybody else has any other questions for me, more than happy to answer them.
I guess my only concern with the Lakeview Allen intersection, it's not what you're doing, 'cause I think what you're doing is great, those trailers are an eyesore, and I'm sure what you build will be beautiful, and it's only a replacement of the same number of units. So, I'm not against that, I guess I'm just against of what might happen in the future, or what's possible in the future, once someone else buys it, or you decide to tear down your townhomes, like, 'cause that zoning opens up a lot more possibilities.
Correct. I mean, and this might be a better question for them, but my personal thought is, is that it still has to comply with the Boone County standards, which are adopted by the city of Centaria.
See, that's what I don't know.
And, so, such as parking, uh, number of parking spots per unit, per square footage of each unit, so on and so forth. And so, the one thing that I was never really a big fan about, and I've been very boisterous about, is my personal opinion, you shouldn't have to go through rezoning to do single-family townhomes, 'cause in my personal opinion, it's still a single-family residence. It increases the density of, of the property by dwellings and things. So, we've got through that, the city's made their determination, and so, I believe everybody's on the same page, and that's how it's gonna be, so, that's the cards that were dealt with. Um, but I, I don't, I think that you, there's a square footage requirement that's required for certain units and things like that, as far as parking, so, on that property there, the way it sets as it is, I don't think you can increase it anymore.
And I'm not smart about these issues at all, it's not what I do, but does this open- But does this open the possibility in the future of allowing this spot zoning, allowing someone else to argue? Like, say, someone buys up a bunch of land out in Cobblestone or somewhere. Can they then try to get a spot zone because, and use yours as a platform to allow it to happen again?
I'm not in the term.
Well, I'm just saying, does this set a precedent? Has this happened before?
Yes, it does. So it's a precedent.
So you could open up all of R1 to spot zoning issues.
We want you to do this, and you address the spot zoning issue like that. That is an argument that will be made.
Sure. And I'll give you a prime example of it. There was a guy that was around here for a lot of years and did tons of fantastic things for our community by the name of Don Bobbitt. Don Bobbitt got spot zoning done back on Bradford Street. I don't remember what year. I mean, it was late 90s, early 2000s, and it was spot zoned to duplexes. So there has been cases of it in the past. Once again, the only reason for rezoning is because of what the city has decided to make the single-family zero lot lines fall under. We've had zero lot lines for years. They've worked. Nobody's had an issue with them. Everybody walks right downtown. Every one of those is a zero lot line. Nobody's had one single problem with them.
You mean downtown, like the businesses?
Correct. That's all zero lot lines. That's basically the same thing.
But I think you kind of expect that from businesses, not so much from homes.
But I think it's all a complete generalization of, you know, everybody says, "We've never had it. We don't use it." "We have used it. We've had it. It works. It's fine." I think it's just the few hurdles that you have to go through to get through it. Anybody else have anything for me?
Did he answer your question? I mean, that you initially asked?
Parking?
I think so. I think so.
Okay.
I didn't think that it was going to create more traffic because it's a busy intersection to begin with. My concern was, once you get people there and you allow two cars per townhouse...
Of course. I can't control how many vehicles they have there.
And I understand that. But you do that, and then let's say, well, this gentleman is living there, and he wants to have a get-together at his house. Well, then he's either going to be parking in everybody else's... His friends are going to be parking in everybody else's spot, or they're going to be parking on Lakeview, or they're going to be parking on Allen Street. And neither one of those are conducive to the cars being parked there.
Absolutely agree.
I don't know how many people have lived in this trip. Seven years, I don't think I've seen more cars than that.
But, so let me say this. Lakeview and Allen Street's not going to be decided, allowed to have parking in that intersection area. That'll never happen. We're not allowed that. It blocks light of vision. So that road there, they'll have to walk, I guess, if they want to have a party from somewhere to get there where they can actually legally park.
Actually, well, no parking sign on there. They are not allowed to park.
Well, that's something that we can deal with.
Correct. The only other thing I want to say before I go sit down is, everybody, Brenda, I have no hard feelings whatsoever. You've raised some good questions. I have no qualms with anything that you brought up or anything. And I kind of made the ongoing, the little joke after the P&amp;Z meeting of, well, at least we got a lot of people that know something about city government now. And so, I mean, I think it's great that everybody's here and everybody asks questions and is involved. You know, I've been here my whole life. I plan on being here the rest of it, however long that is. And so, I do care about Centaria. I am heavily invested in this community and have no desire to go anywhere else. So, you know, I'm always open for a conversation.
So this may be a stupid question. I was just thinking about all the kids in the neighborhood, and would they have, like, your units? Would they have, like, individual trash cans? Or would they have a big dumpster? Because honestly, I work at the intermediate school. A lot of those kids are ornery, and they would climb in a big old dumpster.
Surely not.
That's just kind of a concern for me, so...
I'm sure that'll have to be something that's done with a plan. You know, I remember Mr. Bagley, he made the comment last time at P&amp;Z about the property over beside him, about how it's an issue. And trust me, it's an issue. And, you know, my intentions are, the whole idea with the previous property was to be 55 and older. We're probably just going to do a smaller scaled-down version of it. I know there's been a lot of questions whether I can make them 55 and older only. And I, at this point in time, might accept the challenge. Well, we'll see where we go from there. Okay? Good?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. So you're taking away the request for rezoning, or to rezone three on Allen and Alco. Are you going to submit a request to do zoning two?
R2? That has not been determined at this time. The investor that we're actually talking with at this time, the current zoning is completely fine with him.
So what you're saying, that houses may be built there?
I cannot... I'm not at liberty to say what his intentions are.
Need to stay downsized the current plan, kind of. I mean, like, maybe just less units, but the same kind of thing?
I'm not sure.
You'll let us know.
You basically tell us R1 will work for what you perceive to be...
Okay.
That's what he said. That's why we threw that.
But if it becomes a request to go to R2, that would be submitted, and this whole process would start over? Okay.
But it's been pretty clear that there's been a large pushback in that area. I mean, so...
I can say this, that my neighborhood knows that I've been out for about three weeks talking to everybody, getting signatures, educating myself and educating everybody what's happening. Because a lot of people, they did receive a letter, and some of them did, but some of them did. And I know it was in the paper, and I know it was on the city's website and everything. But a lot of people were like, "Yeah, I really don't understand what's going on." And so I explained to them, and when I told them 22 units, everybody's like, "Ugh, yeah." You know, we've all talked. And if, I'm just telling you, Darren, if it's R2, we'll put up another fight. We want it to stay R1.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that? Any thoughts from service?
And this is not on the agenda as a resolution tonight. So the second request, this one was withdrawn, but the request for Lallan-Lakeview will be actually adopted at the November 18 meeting if it's passed. That's where we would have the opportunity to...
I have a question on that. This was put in as one request. Don't they both have to be voted up or down at the same time?
We took them up as two separate...
I realize that, but legally, I believe that if it's a single request, they both have to be voted on at the same time, and it's an up or down vote.
No, I think that's...
Then we'll check...
I think you can lay it to where it is if you want to.
Because, you know, it should have been put in as two different requests if they wanted that, if they could be acted upon.
It was put in as two separate legal descriptions.
Yes, but it was one request.
So the question I have for you at this point, do you want to withdraw it? Or do you want us to vote on both of them, you know?
How's the city going to vote on it, as one or as two?
We'll have to talk to Sydney.
We'll have to talk to Sydney, but...
Has she seen the request?
The proposal for planning zoning...
It was two separate. It was two separate votes for planning zoning.
Boyd, you don't... Boyd, I will ask your opinion as a chairman of the Boone County Planning and Zoning Commission?
That was a really big bust that just ran over my ass. No offense. Fact of the matter is, we're competitors. We don't obviously see it eye to eye. And as you said, it's nothing personal. You asked a question. If the request was submitted on, as the same request, if two properties, this is the way we would look at it at the county, is if the two requests were submitted on the same application, they have to be treated as one application and one request. I'm sorry, that's not the answer you wanted, but you asked. But from a legal perspective, and I'm sorry, for those of you who may not know me, I'm Boyd Harris. I have business and real estate interest in town. Darren and I are competitors. We try to get along, and we're doing better, I think. But I chaired County Planning and Zoning Commission for 10 or 11 years now. And if it came as one request to the commission, it would have to be acted on. The commission would have no authority to unilaterally sever those two, that request into two separate requests.
A request to the county, do they have a document? Or can I just write a letter to the county and say, "I want this rezoned"? Or is there a document?
No, there's an application process, just like what this is.
Well, we don't have an application process.
There, again, you may have identified a flaw. But if it came as the same request, I don't see, unknown to the way we operate, I don't see how it could be severed into two different requests. Sorry for your inconvenience, but you guys asked.
So can we table that?
Well, it's not on the agenda tonight for a decision anyway.
Okay.
I need to find out some stuff, probably. Okay. Yeah.
So if we haven't, we're still invested in this decision, ultimately, we should attend the next meeting again?
Sure, you're welcome to. Absolutely. Can you tell me where you're from and...
I live on the corner of Alco and Allen.
That's fine.
On the northwest corner.
The document, the legal document. I'll need yours as well, ma'am, okay?
I'm sorry.
I need it.
Just state your name and state it.
I just need, for public record, we just need, nothing to say. We want all your name and where you live so we can say publicly, state it.
My name's William Ross. I live on the corner of Alco and Allen on the northwest corner, directly across the street from the said properties. From what I've gained from this, or from what I've seen from this, he's pretty much attracted his request for R3 on that property. So is that an issue right now?
Well, it depends on how it has to be moved forward. It may not be, we may have to go through a process again to get where they're separate. It depends. That's just what our legal counsel tells us.
Okay, so at that point, we'll all be notified that this is going to be rehashed?
If we have a public hearing, yes.
Okay.
But all that you all brought forward with that, the zoning of those two different parcels, counts to me as your thoughts about those areas. So we're not going to get rid of the letters and a lot, and I have to be in here during statements, right? So I mean...
I mean, we don't, not all of us live within 185 feet of the bottom one, but I think we're all opposed to the spot zoning issue. And I don't know if that matters as far as down at the other block, but...
I mean, it matters. As an alderman sitting up here, it seems big crowd here, appreciate everyone's opinion. The effort that's been put in, the passion behind it. However anything plays out, we like seeing that people are involved in expressing their opinions, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Ward. I live at 332 Alco Street. And I've only lived here just a little over a year. I moved here from Ohio. And I've had several people come in from Ohio and other places wanting to know, "How come those trailers are still there? They look like they're ready to fall down." And I say, you know, I don't know what to tell them. Whether there's laws off the books or anything about these places. But, and I may not, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I see in the whole city of Centaria, there's places all over the city that there's trash piled in the yard, there's old junk cars, there's everything like this. Isn't there any kind of a law that takes care of getting these people to clean their properties up? I mean, I'm not comparing Ohio and Missouri. But back in Ohio, you get something like that with trash and coal cars and junk cars and all kinds of junk. The city sends you a letter and says, "Hey, we'd like for you to clean this up if you would." This goes on two or three times with the city and the letters, and they go out and talk to the people and everything else. And after a while, the city comes along and says, "Hey, whether you're the property owner or whether you're who you are, we want this cleaned up. If we're not going to clean it up, we will clean it up for you and we'll assess it onto your property taxes." Now, I don't know anything about what's going on here in Centaria. But like I say, I've only lived here a year and a half, and I see a lot of us around here.
Let me respond to you. We have a lot of people that are good people in town. We have a few people that are ruining it for other people. We have ordinances. Some are a little general, too general probably because what does unsightly mean to you and me could be, or 10 of us in this room could be totally different things. We're a town that has grown. And as we've grown, we need to keep up and we need to catch up on some of the ordinances and some of the things that we need to do. That's absolutely nothing against anybody that precedes me.
Well, I'm not...
So my point is this. We do have ordinances. They're going to be enforced. I think in the past, people have not taken seriously the people that are in the field. I've knocked on people's doors. I've talked to them, stood in the yard with them, and they said, "You won't believe, Mayor Cox, I know your family, I know you. You won't believe what this is going to look like in two weeks." And there was something parked in the middle of, and if I say what it is, too many people know what it was, who it is. The bottom line is, there was something parked in the middle of the sidewalk where people couldn't even use the sidewalk until 12 weeks later. So I've rode around, and he'll tell you over there, the chief will, that Sandy, who's our code enforcement officer, and I rode around together. And I had a list and had her get her pad out because I had cars that were not running, I had junk, I had trees, I had looked like homes that were uninhabitable. We've got a cat house here in town that the cats are running loose. And that's what's just for the cats, and it's ruining the property value of a whole cul-de-sac. And we're going to work on that, and we're committed to working on that. And it's on the list. The problem is, you're talking about people's property, right? That's a serious thing to go after.
Well, I realize that.
And so, but we are. So I absolutely applaud you taking notice of those people saying that because we talk about this and we're after this right now today with a lot of ordinances and improvements and ordinances, I think. We got the ordinances on the book to clean things up.
And as far as I'm concerned, the property there at the end of Alco and Allen, and the next street south of that, whatever it is, as long as it helps to raise the property, to raise the price of my property, I'm sure anything is...
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Anybody else? All right. Do I have any open comments from the citizens? I think everybody was here for all these other things, but I want to make sure I don't miss somebody that had something completely different. Yes, sir.
I just got something about getting a road paved. Is that due now or...
Yes, you can say it here.
Okay.
Come up and address this, please.
I'm Eric Kowalski. I live on Campbell Street. It's a street that's not paved, and it's a new work subdivision, I guess. I don't know who's at fault on why it's not paved, who's to pay it. But I've got petition here signed from everybody on Campbell Street, minus two people that I could not get ahold of. We agreed last time that it could be ditches. It didn't have to be curbing gutter. We was up for discussion on who's going to pay for it, if we have to pay for it. We were supposed to have to pay for it. I know, you know, like you said here, let's keep Centaria clean. I see the papers were out a couple, about a month ago, which was needed, don't get me wrong. And I was just wondering why it couldn't come down. I know it's a money issue. I do understand that. Is there anything else that can be done about getting Campbell Street paved? Is it something that, I mean, do I need to get more people to sign, or...
So what we're looking at, there are some road improvement grants through their community development lot grants. And it's something that was brought to our attention, one a month ago, maybe, or a month ago. And we have a committee. I'm sure I'd ask if you would like to be on our committee.
I haven't heard that yet. I'm not in politics.
I talked to your wife of a little bit, so I'm sorry for your misunderstanding on that. So the area that we identified does include Campbell Street, but this committee would have to look at the city overall to make sure that that would be the best option because it would include Campbell and South Central in that area where it, because it's pretty broken up. It's not a guarantee that we would get the grant, but it would help with finding the money to do that straight.
It all works out to meet the guidelines of what you would need to have a good chance of getting a grant, is what we're saying. And that has sidewalks and some other things included in it, right? So.
Well, I don't know about the sidewalks.
Not just that area I'm talking about, though.
Right, right.
This is Campbell, City of Centray, in some areas, okay? So.
But it would have to be paved to standard, not just the ditches, it would have to be permanent.
Well, how come Allen Street's not a curving gutter then? If that's going to be the issue.
What is?
South Allen Street, that's all ditch.
Well, it's not new either, so whatever standards.
It's new either.
Well, this would be a new paved street, Allen Street's not a new paved street. It's whatever the standards are, whatever is put in, exists anyways.
All right, thank you. You're listening.
I thank everybody for your comments, your passion in being here. I find it exciting for people to be engaged and be involved. It's painful for us sometimes if we work all day and all this other stuff that we do, but your voice will be heard, it is heard, and I appreciate everybody's side for this thing.
Can I, in case Sidney says something, can I go on and make a formal request so it's in the minutes to have the property at the corner of Lakeview and Allen Street rezoned to R3? Just in case you all have to.
We'll note it in the minutes.
Okay, and then I can bring you a letter tomorrow?
Yep.
Do that.
That way we're double covered.
All right, moving forward, consent agenda. We do all in the other minutes of prior meeting. Connects of Public Works, Moore Law and Public Works Utilities, once the joint agreement, Public Safety Committee meeting, all October 14th, or those two, September 23rd, 2019, is the first meeting, Moore Law and. And connect the plan, the plan in August, September 27th, 2019. He is the fourth, the treasurer, the fourth, the head of ports. We'll take all of the doors. So what's your? Nigel said I would entertain most approved, the two agendas presented. A first and second to approve the consent agenda that's presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Assets, we move on to accounts payable over $1,250, equaling $609,346.04. Any comments on those?
Is that all for the Christianson bill?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So they're paid for, they're done? It's on page 54, if you get.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable over $1,250.
Move to approve the accounts payable over $1,250, for grand total of $609,346, and force on a second.
A first and second to approve the accounts payable over $1,250, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move down to action agenda. Finance, we have nothing. Permits and licenses, we have nothing. The third, C, we have. So are we voting on this tonight, or are we still going to do this, or are we doing on zero lot lines?
Yeah, uh-huh. But planning and zoning, that's a little opportunities to look over those ordinances, and this would be for your consideration unless, I mean, if you saw questions on the ballot, we can table that until the next meeting.
So amending sections of the city code to allow for zero lot lines, zero lot lines and planned development districts. Ordinance of that. If you would, Alderman Terry, Molly, would you read the motion for a review of that order?
Yes.
By title.
Bill number 2316. Move that bill number 2316 be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
A first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we have to read this a second time?
She didn't remember the first time.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm just trying to get, sorry.
You're getting good, you're getting real good, you almost had it.
I was just saying. I've got a cheating sheet, don't screw up. I'll take what I get.
That's a good one, it's good.
No problems.
Uh, let's see here.
That gets really.
I tested out my contacts, so it's kind of. Sorry for my being, okay. Let's see, so I just read first. Okay. An ordinance amending subsection A of section 30.1-5 of the Centray City Code concerning sketch flat requirements, chapter 31 of the Centray City Code, add a new article.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you, creating planned dwelling districts, and amending section 31-2, subsection D in section 31-22, and subsection D of section 31-24 of the Centray City Code to allow for attached one-family dwellings when permitted in a planned dwelling district. Move that bill number 2316 be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
A first and second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending subsection A of section 30.1-5 of the Centray City Code concerning sketch flat requirements, chapter 31 of the Centray City Code, add a new article eighteen, creating planned dwelling districts, and amending section 31-2, subsection D of section 31-22, and subsection D of section 31-24 of the Centray City Code to allow for attached one-family dwellings when permitted in a planned dwelling district. Move that bill number 2316 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
First and second. Do we do roll call vote instead, or is it all in favor?
Do it all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So roll call vote.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Boorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Moken?
Four.
So what is number?
Three zero three zero.
So by your vote, bill 2316 passes, ordinance three zero three zero. Amending sections of the city code to allow for short-term rentals and altering requirements for bed and breakfast establishments, ordinance. Would you present the ordinance, Roger?
Yeah, exactly what is this? What are we trying to, I mean, what are we trying to do?
So we have a request for an Airbnb, and then whenever it came down to it, we were advised that we couldn't do an Airbnb or VRVO, Vacation Rental by Owner, until we actually adopted something to allow that in our city code. So this has been through planning and zoning a couple of different times along. Planning zoning, I really looked at zero lot length planned development districts, and at the same time, I looked at this ordinance, and at the same time, I looked at FOWL. So all three of these have been passed through planning and zoning several. So this, it amends the requirement to have a three-acre lot for a bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast would only be allowed by conditional use, and we would just strike that part of that out. And then it also, then it adds wording to allow for short-term rentals, which is Airbnb or a VRVO.
How is a short-term rental way different from a long-term rental?
Because they're probably only there for two, three days.
Well, I understand what the difference is, but how is it different in our ordinance that we can't, that a short-term rental is prohibited now?
It's not necessarily prohibitive, but there are special taxes that go along with that. And so if we allow it, and then we go through the permitting process, then the city is able to get some of this.
Taxes that go with it?
I would have to look at it to see.
But I mean, far as I'm concerned, whether you rent it for a week or for a year, we rent, there's rental property all over town, the single-family houses, I don't know why. I mean, I'm not opposed to this by any means, I'm just, for my clarification, I'm wondering why we were told we can't, somebody can't do this now, because the rental is rental.
I can understand that, I can, I sort of turn them.
Right. Many departments don't understand.
We don't have mountains outside of town or a river, man.
I could call Sidney and she could explain it probably better than I could, but.
But I think from the planning and zoning part, wasn't the deal was that either once, you know, the bed and breakfasts, they were thinking about how the AB Chance house was, and people lived there and all that, so that was, you had to have somebody on site. So all they've gotten that, and we went through all of that, and it got down to a long-term rental could be more than thirty, you know, had to be less than thirty days. So all that got talked about, we didn't have anything really on the books to guarantee that somebody would move in there. There was some concern that somebody might move in and rent one of these Airbnbs because they come back from graduation, I mean, for a, say, alumni thing, and they, instead of staying in Columbia, they want to stay here because there's four or five houses in town available that people are using, has these rental properties that people use all over for business. So that's how this came about, I think, at that point, because we don't have real clarity in the other ordinance.
A long-term rental is, you have to turn that over to the people renting it, as for utilities and all. Short-term, the individual that owns it always pays that, and we don't, the city doesn't care who lives.
They're responsible for.
So is that what we're trying to accomplish?
But there are long-term rentals where the owner pays it too, because it's just included in the rent, the owner pays the income, I believe. And I know that we hadn't set up what we had around the property, that if the people did not pay, that it turned over into our name, and we wouldn't have paid, that we wouldn't have charged the tenant. I mean, I'm not opposed to this by any means, I think there's some good things in here, as long as you're satisfied with them.
Yeah, run them over, I was, the changes that were requested happened, and I'm good with the ordinances.
I just don't see why we were told that it couldn't be done before when the rental is right. That's where we're at, you know.
Because I think Sidney wanted to discover the basis on everything, that's why she wanted to.
Well, I think we're going back and fixing everything that we have to make sure it's current and how to fix it, you know, from being vague or not in place or being real general. That's maybe that's, you know, where we're headed with this thing, I don't know, I don't know. But I take her judgment, I don't have a law degree, I don't practice law degree today, so. I don't say. An objection to doing this, but I think there are some good things about it. I understand your point, but.
I just didn't know. Bill number?
Two three one seven.
Move that bill number two three one seven be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
A first and second, to read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the bill number 2317, an ordinance amending section 31-1 and section 31-19, subsection six of subsection B, adding subsection seven to subsection B of section 31-19, and adding section 16-15. Lot point three of the city.
I'll go buy you a beer.
Of the Centray City Code concerning short-term rentals in the city of Centray, Missouri.
Second.
Move the bill number 2317 be given its second reading by title only?
Okay, I got it. I'll be very tired, Donnie, I'm sorry. That being said, I have a motion, a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You want to hear it again?
Yeah.
Terry, you lucked out. Move that bill number 2317, an ordinance amending section 31-1 and section 31-19, subsection six of subsection B, adding subsection seven to subsection B of section 31-19, and adding section 16-15.3 of the Centray City Code concerning short-term rentals in the city of Centray, Missouri. Move that bill number 2317 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I think we should have a third reading on that. No, no, no.
I'm sure it missed something in there.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Boorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Moken?
Four.
Show you, you won that pretty seriously.
Bill number 2317 passes and becomes ordinance number?
Three zero three one.
Three zero three one. Could you repeat all that?
Can you print that the way I read it?
We're going to move right on. Are you even here? Amending sections of the city code concerning FOWL inside the city limits. Alderman Boorman, would you please present that? I think we ought to table this one, and it should be cleaned up before we do it, because the way it's written in here, it says a 15,000 square foot lot, but then it says you've got to be 100 foot from the front yard and 50 feet from the side rear yards. That takes a minimum size lot to get a 10 by 10 square foot for your chickens.
It's supposed to be 60 and 10, it got changed in the other spot, not here, so.
But there's a sentence right above that that's not very good either, and I think that sentence ought to be changed in order to make it read more clearly.
About horses and fowls?
No, where it says, "Up to six vials shall be permitted for each lot with square feet of lot area of 15,000 to 30,000," and that's kind of an awkward reading.
Okay.
It should say something like, "With an area between 15,000 square feet and 30,000 square feet," which is much more understandable.
All right.
So I would like to see this one tabled until it can be cleaned up. By the way, that's 22,100 square feet, and if you want a 10 by 10 area for your chickens, the way this is written. Not 15,000.
So you're doing a motion to table it?
Yes.
A second.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded, the table, ordinance. Flip it one. It was a dead heat, I don't know, one or two. All in favor of table the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll table it. We move to Burtstein, we don't have anything there. Old business, your business. New business. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I have one thing. Our zoning code right now has three residential districts. That's R1, R2, and R3, single-family, duplexes, multifamily. R1 is 7,000 square feet, that agrees with the zoning codes of both Boone County and Columbia. R2 is 5,000 square feet per family, which agrees with both the Boone County and Columbia zoning code. R3 is 1,500 square feet, which does not agree with either of the other codes, which are 2,500 feet. Columbia has an R4 zoning that is 1,500 per feet. I'm wondering why we have such a small requirement for R3. What that basically means on the lot that Darren was proposing on Lakeview, that is a lot that has 14,560 feet, that is 9.7 units. So he could put nine units on there if we rezoned it, as an open zoning of R3. I think that's kind of ridiculous. Now, he says he's only going to put a fourplex in there, but once that zoning passes, he can put anything in that the zoning allows, and that's 15,000, 1,500 per feet per family. That's smaller than my house.
And that, you're talking, that's total square foot of the property, not just that?
Right, well, per family, yes.
Yeah, so 1,500 square feet per family. Yeah, so fifteen hundred square feet per family.
Per family, yes. That's pretty small.
So he could take his planning and zoning and have the owner look at that?
Look at that and probably raise it to twenty-five hundred square feet, which would agree with Boone County's and Columbia ordinance.
I, I agree, it's uniform, and it makes sense to me.
I mean, if there's anything in town that doesn't comply with that, then it would be grandfathered in, uh,
Sure.
but anything that, uh, you know, unless somebody has an undeveloped lot, they could claim, uh, we might have to pay them or something like that, or allow them to do it, but I mean, for the most part, most of these are already in place, and, you know, changing it would not be a huge problem. But I think it would be a huge benefit to our citizens.
I think, I think it closes a potential loophole in the future that we potentially could have for somebody developing too many units, packing them in there, like that we're talking about to me, so I think that makes good sense.
Fifty hundred square feet, pretty small.
As we go along, we wanna find things like this and pick our ordinances up to a better standard if they need to be addressed, right? Or qualified.
That, that's the total that's required per family.
So did you capture that? Good to go, okay. All right, um, new business for Veterans Day proclamation, uh, do I need you to get the proclamation read?
Yep, usually you read it.
So, uh, Veterans Day proclamation, "On Monday, November eleventh, we honor the va, uh, valiant servicemen and women who put their lives on the forefront of defending our nation so that we may live securely in our land of liberty. And this being the year of the eighteenth anniversary of those infamous attacks on the World Trade Center, Pentagon, and our way of life, it is appropriate to give official recognition to these. To this day, a day so signed by our government as a national holiday to honor, remember, and appreciate all veterans of the armed forces of the United States of America. We owe our safety and security to the countless women and men who have selfishly, selfishly sacrificed their lives to protect our freedoms and rights. And it is fitting and proper to also recognize that there are several military members who are unable to be with us today, who has, who has gave, who have given the ultimate sacrifice and loss of life or limb for the freedoms that we have and enjoy. And it is fitting and proper to recognize that freedom is one thing we cannot have unless we are willing to give it to others. And so, for their sacrifice, suffering, and survival to preserve our freedom, we honor all veterans with the observance of this day. I, Chris Cox, Mayor of Centray, Missouri, and viewers, and fellow citizens, to pay special tribute to, on this day, to all veterans of the United States of America, and thank them for the sacrifice and service. And whereof I have sent my hand, and seal, seal this proclamation tribute, uh, and with humility, Chris Cox."
I'd like you to really read that and put the whereas in there really.
I can do that. Donnie had to do a death of point.
I'll read it, he did.
Connected to B by the C, I didn't know we had the math, uh, things in there, so, that's it, little row here, too. Now, appointments, uh, Landon Enix, from part-time officer to full-time officer. Uh, I'd like to point him to the position of full-time officer to fill the open position created, uh.
Just created recently.
Just created recently, right. So.
I'll make a motion when we approve the mayor's appointment under Landon Enix to, uh, part-time officer to full-time officer.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve Landon Enix to position a full-time officer, uh, to fill our open position. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, we graduate, uh, and moving up to that, first chief, if you would.
Alder.
Um, committee meetings Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Eleventh is a holiday, so our next, our, our next meeting would be only twelfth because of the holiday, Tuesday, twelfth.
It's the same day as the community watch meeting, we may want to, uh. The neighborhood watch meeting is the same day? Yes, it is, we may want to move that. All the officer figure, though.
Thank you, sir. Okay, see you, Mr. Ray.
Um, I reported in the packet, if you have questions, please let me know. I just realized that there is something else that's not in the packet, this, um, this task order with MECO engineering for structural reports of a dangerous structure. Per the, um, new procurement policy, um, the amount on this is not to exceed two thousand dollars, so I'm authorized to, um, to sign that task order, um, so I just wanted, but really, I just wanted you all to be aware that we are looking at, this would be for a structural report, um, the dangerous structure is for catalog drive. Cindy said if we want to look at expediting the process of deeming it a dangerous, and condemning, possibly condemning the building to the cat house, that's been referred to, then this is the route that we need to go.
Yeah.
After she saw the pictures and saw the report, she, this is what she suggested we do.
We've, we've had citizens for ten years trying to get something done about that house, and it's, I've had everybody, and I've got letters, and they've came, and we need to, we do do, expect that there is pretty possible, you know? Somebody's not allowed to give away what, what, what any of those people probably, that's what we do. Your honor, did you say ten years?
I, I'm very conservative, I'm gonna say, you can go way back. This is, this is a personal question, this is journalism. Is this the old house, is this the house that the Schram family used to live in? Wally Schram?
No.
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 Okay, thank you.
No, it's not.
And then, um, in your packet, there is a public hearing notice, that there will be another public hearing this Thursday, I will not be there, might over that meeting. For the rezoning for possible for planned development district at Riley's Parks subdivision. City crews are currently looking over the plot map.
Preliminary plot.
Preliminary plot.
Right.
Um, so they'll have suggestions at that time. And then, just so, in case you guys didn't know, I'm going on vacation, as of tomorrow morning, and I might be back until next Wednesday. And I haven't mentioned it at all, but I will be gone and unavailable.
I gotta ask, I'm looking over your, you had a busy month, and all the things you did. What in the world, you could, after the radio interview with K-Love, what is that?
It's a station.
Is that a radio station?
Is that a real channel?
Yeah.
K-Love?
Yeah.
That's actually, must be.
It wasn't like a love show or anything.
Ninety-two point one.
Ninety-two point one, they came in, they actually came in and did the interview, and then he'll let me know when it airs.
I just, okay.
I, I.
You did a very good interview.
Thanks.
I listen to it every day.
Yeah.
Is your nose growing, Donnie?
So Thursday's another P and Z meeting?
Yes.
Six P M?
Six-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, are you?
I'm done.
Okay, city attorney, nothing there, how it should work, of her, as may arise.
There's one thing I would like to bring up, just, uh, plant a thought, uh, for everybody, um, as we know, all of our offices, those, say here, voted for two-year terms. What that does is allows, and I've mentioned this to the mayor, what that does is mean that people on this side of the group are voted on, on the same year as the mayor, so anyone here wanted to run for mayor, they really would need to vacate their seat, or could only run for one, or should only run for one. I'd like to suggest that we look at amending our ordinance to the mayor's terms for three years. So that way it rotates on the sides, in case people from one side or the other wanted to run, um, they could do so without necessarily vacating their seat.
That'd be super good, is that from the work you're on already?
No, I just, I think it rings a balance.
And, no, but, what you're saying, that's what you're talking about.
He's actually gonna pay, really.
Yeah. He gets a little bit bigger retirement check. There's some weeks you earn a lot more than the other.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're done.